Give you this.
Okay. Oh, thank you. I'm not, I'm not a stand-up comedian, but I am the lucky person who gets to be with you tonight. I'm very excited. I'm Sydney Dixon. I currently work at the University of Utah, the College of Education, former state superintendent in public instruction for nine years. And there's nothing I appreciate more than people who are willing to run for office, and especially our school boards, who have such an important role in making policy decisions for our schools. So thank you both for running. A few little ground rules, just so that you're aware. Each candidate will begin with a three-minute opening statement, just to get us all grounded and, and give you a little information about them, get to know them, their qualifications, and what they hope to see for the future of the district. And then following that, we have a series of questions. There were a lot of questions submitted. I was thrilled to see the number of questions. And I've tried to condense those into a number of themes that they can address, so you get to know their views on issues. We'll limit those responses to two minutes. And the great gift is a yellow and red card here in the audience by Ms. Holly. So Holly will hold up a yellow when there's 30 minutes remaining, and a red when your time is up, and that will help keep us on track. So three-minute intro, two minutes for each question, and then ninety, we'll have 90 seconds if they add, just to kind of wrap up, and if there's anything they missed or want to add. Okay? I know quite a few of you in the audience, so I can tell this is going to be an awesome, respectful, wonderful, interested audience. So thank you so much for sacrificing your time and being willing to be here. And I have to give a shout out to Region 8 PTA, because Tricia and her team have put this great event together. I want to thank them. All right. This won't surprise you, but I was interested in the question of hiring a superintendent. So it's one of the first, and, oh, wait, I already blew it. Let's go back. You're going to introduce yourselves and take three minutes. Sorry. And Megan is going to do that, we'll go to Diana, and then we'll flip back and forth on who answers the questions. So look at that perfect timing. We've got more people. Here we go, Megan. Thank you.
I'm Megan Mullins, and I'm running for Aspen Peak School Board, because this work matters deeply to me. I have three kids still in the district at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, and I feel a strong responsibility for helping to build this new district. I'm not just interested in education, I'm inside of it alongside teachers and parents. I've done this for years. I'm a former middle school math teacher turned parent volunteer when my youngest entered kindergarten, and he just graduated from high school. I've taught art lessons in a district that had no art program. I've been to countless parent-teacher conferences. I've chaperoned field trips. I've been a room parent. You name it, and I've done it. I've served on school community councils here in Lehigh at Belmont, Viewpoint, and Skyridge High School, and continue to serve at Viewpoint and Skyridge. But I'm grateful to have a current perspective of what's happening in our schools. I served for four years in the Belmont Executive Committee's PTA, and I was VP of Leadership and VP of Advocacy, and was so grateful to be a part of that work and what they do to help our teachers and our schools. Outside of the classroom, I serve on the Utah State Library Board, and I'm grateful for that perspective of what's happening in a larger area of our state. I also serve on the Lehigh City Park Tax Committee. I help connect resources to community needs. I've been able to connect with city leaders and to see how our city and our schools connect. I've served for three years here in Lehigh on my HOA board, two of those as board president, where I've learned how to budget, how to be a good steward over other people's money, how to think about long-term planning, and how to work with others whom we haven't had the same viewpoint. I'm grateful to be endorsed by Jenny Timmerman, a longtime school leader and volunteer. Her support means everything, given her experience here in Lehigh. She also ran for school board in this seat. I'm grateful to be endorsed by Paul Hancock, a Lehigh City Council member for the last 12 years. He values the city-school connection, and I'm grateful that someone like Paul thinks that I'm the candidate to do this job. I'm proud to have aligned myself with people and groups who support public education. But what I think sets me apart the most is my work ethic. Over the last eight months, I've met over 2,500 doors. I've been on your doorsteps asking, "What are your concerns? What are your kids' needs?" And I've also been able to share some of my priorities with you. I want you to know that I don't just care about education, I'm living it. And I hope that you'll see tonight that my experience and enthusiasm is what the new school board needs, and I hope to earn your support by November 4th.
Just hold your applause. We'll applaud at the very end.
I am Diane Knight, and I am thrilled to be part of this new Aspen Peak School District. This is a historic opportunity, and I want to contribute to that. I'm a recently retired educator of 36 years, and I know from a lifetime of experience what it takes to have successful outcomes in a classroom. I have served on community councils, both elementary and secondary, as a parent, as my children, I raised my five children in Alpine School District, and also as an educator, where I won an award from the state of Utah for the best use of land trust money. I've served on school leadership teams, I've mentored new teachers, I participated in the hiring process, and I've taught educators around the state. In 2022, I was humbled to receive Utah's Best of State Kindergarten Teacher Award. My vision for Aspen Peaks District is to take all of the good and transform it into something extraordinary. Let me be perfectly clear, though, I am not interested in Alpine 2.0. I am interested in elevating Aspen Peaks to the next level and making it the district of choice for parents and for educators. To do this, we must, number one, focus on the classroom. The classroom must be the lens through which every decision is made, because the classroom is where education actually takes place. Number two goes hand in hand, and that is to support teachers. We must seek out teacher concerns, really listen, and then we must address them, because our teachers are the ones in the trenches with our students. We must support them so they can focus on the classroom. And number three, we must partner with parents. This is not just nice to have. Partnering with parents is essential, because when you partner with parents, the results are exponential. These are not new concepts, they are not rocket science. But what is new is making those the foundation of a school district. To me, they are not catchy campaign slogans. They are how I have lived my life as an educator and how I envision the new Aspen Peaks School District.
Wow, how lucky are you that you have two great candidates to choose from and great introductions. Thank you, ladies. So just a little reminder, a few of you just came in. You'll, you'll see that there are signs that will be held up just to keep us on time. Hold your applause. And again, you just look like such an amazing audience. I know that you'll withhold the, you know, you may want to cheer or disagree, and those are just feelings that we're just going to bottle up inside. And so use your quiet faces to respond. But you'll have an opportunity at the very end to applaud these two great women who have been willing to put themselves out there and serve. So with that, here come the questions. And again, as I mentioned, this is one that's really important to me about a superintendent. It's one of the first, or perhaps primary, functions of the new board, and that will be selecting your superintendent and business administrator. So what are three attributes or qualifications that you think should guide the new school board in making that decision? And we'll trade off, and Diana's going to answer first, and then we'll just make sure that they each get turned in first and second.
Well...
Set or scan, whatever works best for you.
Okay. The first job of the school board is to hire a superintendent and a business administrator. But before we do that, we must establish our vision. And I have a very clear vision of what I am looking for in Aspen Peaks School District. I am not the only person on the board, but I hope that the vision can be to focus on the classroom and to support our teachers. And so what I am looking for in a superintendent is somebody who shares those thoughts, who cares about the classroom, and who cares about our teachers, not just tolerates teachers. They have to really be supportive of teachers. So I am looking for that. And I am also looking for someone who cares about our community enough that they can respond and take comments and take feedback and listen to what people want. So they, the job of a superintendent is to support the vision that the school board comes up with. And so that has to really be the first thing. And then after that, I am looking for someone, again, who will focus on teachers and the classroom.
Thank you.
When I think about a superintendent, one of the qualities I think is really important is that they're a great communicator. As we discussed with the new superintendent what our vision is and what our goals are, they'll be working with us as he, as they report to the school board, but everyone else is hired through our superintendent. We need someone who's going to be able to be clear, transfer information back and forth, make sure the staff clearly understands the vision of our board, the goals of the board. We need someone who can communicate with our parents and with our community. So being a great communicator is so important. Next, I would love someone who is a great collaborator. I was talking to some teachers, and they expressed that they want to make sure that people who are making decisions are making sure they're listening to all of the voices. Are they talking to teachers? Are they talking to parents? Are they talking to staff? And so I want to have a superintendent that understands that he needs to get, he or she needs to get a lot of points of view before they make a decision. I think being a collaborator is so important. I think it's important that we cast a wide net for how we're looking for a superintendent, but I also want to make sure that we have someone that understands who we are, that understands Utah County, that understands our legislature, that understands our culture, that they can come in and feel like they're adding to and not taking away from. I would also like someone kind of with that, who is in education. Sometimes we can look at how large a school district is, and it can feel like it's run like a business. But I need someone who understands what it means to be in a classroom, to work with teachers, to work with staff, and understands how important our students are.
Thanks, Megan. Hang on to that mic.
Great.
All right, the next question is around board priorities. So what do you believe is the number one priority for the area you represent? And then how would you go about advocating for this priority, as well as other priorities that will come forward?
Great question. As I've knocked doors over the course of this campaign, probably my number one priority is that we attract the best teachers to our school district. With three districts that are open, we're going to have to be competitive with who wants to come to Aspen Peaks. I think we can do that in a variety of ways. So one is that we offer competitive pay and benefits. I watched teachers at the last school board, a couple of school board meetings ago, who were so nervous about waiting for their contracts to come through, and they cheered when it did. And I was like heartbroken that they were so nervous about what their contract would look like. So I want to make sure that we're offering competitive pay and we're making them feel valued. I think we need to offer professional development that's valuable to them, that makes them better in their jobs. I think that's really important. I also have had teachers tell me, once again, I want someone to walk in my shoes. I want someone to know when they're making a decision that it's really impacting our classroom. It might sound great on paper, but someone's implementing that plan. So have we talked to them? Have we created a culture where teachers feel like they've been heard? I think if we have great teachers, that trickles down to the best student experience. For me, it's not just about the classroom. We really need to be focused on the students. There's so many people outside of the classroom that impact our students at a staff level, superintendent, board members. So for keeping the student in mind, I think that's a really important lens to look through. So for me, teachers is probably our number one priority.
It's hard to narrow it down to one, but for me, it needs to be listening and giving people's input, listening to what their concerns are. Because I feel like people are concerned about what's going to happen with this new school district. They want their voice to be heard, and we need to seek out that input, and we need to listen and truly make them feel heard. And then we need to act upon those things. So our number one concern is to be open, to seek out input, to listen to it, and then to act upon that. I've talked about that with teachers, and yes, that is huge. But it goes to our parents and our bigger community as well. We must be listening. We must be gathering information. We must make people feel heard, because this is a new situation that we are in establishing this new district. And we need voices to be heard, and we need to communicate to them. They don't need to be afraid. We will make this work, and that's our number one priority.
Thanks, Diane. So you can continue on that point a little bit, because we're going to talk about community engagement. One of the concerns expressed by voters when all of the conversation was going on, both privately and publicly, about this dividing up of Alpine, was the need for more local control and parent involvement and engagement. So how will you go about gaining high levels of support for public education while addressing the needs of the stakeholders in this community?
First off, they have to be heard. I have a plan how I am going to seek out input from educators and staff members in the schools. One of my greatest strengths is that I listen, and people feel heard when they talk to me. But we must leverage parent support as well. One of the things that I do on the side is I am the education specialist for a nonprofit in Salt Lake City, and as such, I am a liaison with Granite School District. I have a front row seat to what they do to involve the parents in their community. Their parent engagement program is amazing, and we need to seek out best practices from other districts. And that is one thing that I would like to implement. We do not need to reinvent the wheel. Let's look around. Let's see what's happening. Let's see what's working. Let's make sure that the people in our community feel seen and heard, and let's implement these great ideas that we get.
Community engagement is super important. I've noticed this as I've been on your doorsteps, and parents are really excited to just tell you about their own kid or their own schools. They want to make sure that you understand what's happening in their daily life. And I've been grateful for current board members like Stacy Bateman and Julie King, who have an active social media page. I think it is so important, that's where I have gone as a parent of kids in the district, to get information. People go and ask questions. There's a great dialogue in the comments. That is something that I would hope to continue. If you've noticed, or if you follow my current Facebook page, I'm posting daily updates on what I'm doing, on what meetings I've attended. I think it's important to make sure we're distributing all that information in as many ways as possible. I appreciate Principal Wallwork at Skyridge High School. He does pastries with the principals once a month on Fridays. You guys are nodding over here. I think that's fantastic, to have face-to-face connection with people who are decision-makers. I would love to continue something like a once a quarter, "Come meet with me." Talk to me face-to-face in an informal setting. In board meetings, there's, there's time for community input, but there's not a dialogue back and forth at those meetings. I would love to engage with community members. I think people really just want to have you know that you've heard their situation. Even if you make a decision that doesn't work for them, I think that goes over better when they say, "Okay, but at least I, they understood my background. They understood all the points of view." I'm committed to email and text messages. I've been really open in my campaign about making sure that you have access to me as a board member. Again, I think it's super important that you feel, not just parents, but community members, feel like you have access to people who are making decisions and that can make an impact for you in your life.
Thanks, Megan. Hang on.
Yeah.
All right, something that I think we're all interested in, and that's taxes. Something that, that we all have to pay attention to. So pay attention to what Alpine School District has been involving in taxes over time. A lot of property tax increases over the past several years. So collected, how would you approach decisions on property tax increases for the new district? And under what circumstances, if any, would you support them?
This is a great question. I attended the truth in taxation meeting for Alpine School District, and also listened to the truth in taxation meeting in Davis County. Both meetings were full of a lot of emotion, as people, especially on fixed incomes, have questions about where their tax dollars are going. I think one thing that I would push for is working with our legislatures on making sure our income tax is what is funding our public schools and making sure that money is coming directly to us. It's a more equitable tax than is our property taxes. But if we have a lower income tax rate, we have to make up that difference somehow, and the school board is allowed to use our property taxes to do that. I really appreciated in Davis County, the business administrator, as he walked through and educated those in that meeting to understand each piece of that puzzle. And so again, hiring a business administrator that is able to describe these complex issues so that people understand. There was a woman in that meeting who got up and was really upset, and she said, "But I am going to let you know that I learned something, and I know that the county assessor is the one that decided my property value." And so she was able to really understand better what was happening, because that business administrator took the time to explain that process. So for me, I can't make a promise, yes or no, will I raise your taxes or not. It's important that you know that I'm one of seven board members, and I have to look at all the data. We have to make sure our public schools are funded, but I want you to know that I would be a good steward with that money. I would make no decisions without looking at all possible outcomes. And the last thing I'll say is, I think it's important that we tie every dollar that we spend back to a goal in the district, that we have priorities, that we have a list of things we have to do, and every time we spend a dollar, we're able to link it back to some goal that we're making, whether that's short-term or long-term.
Again, this goes back to communication. And the tax issue is very complex. There are lots of pieces that go to it. There's the income tax, there's the property tax, there's the certified tax rate. And anytime you are going to ask for more money about the certified tax rate, you have to have a truth in taxation meeting. And these meetings are very emotion, full of emotion. And I feel like we need to do a better job of explaining this to people. Now, it's not easy to say, "I will never raise your taxes," or "I would raise your taxes." You have to listen to every portion of that. But what I will say is that I will always look for more efficient ways to use our tax dollars. One example of that is how we fund, the proactive use of how we fund class size reduction. So currently, for class size reduction, that money is already in the budget. But I have some ideas for using it proactively, instead of waiting till the last minute to award new teachers. So this is money that's already in the budget. This is an example of a more efficient way to use that money. But on the other hand, there has to be a balance. We cannot sacrifice our students' education just because we don't want to spend money. So we need to weigh that out. We need to carefully consider all of the factors, and then we need to make the decision that is best for our community. But we must communicate that, so that we do not have so much anger and so much, so many hard feelings. Again, that goes right back to communication.
Thank you. Wow, that wasn't too painful, talking about taxes. Well done, ladies. Appreciate that. Diane, since you've got the mic, let's have you talk about working with other school districts. So over a decade ago, we had a large district that split. And I had kind of a front row seat, watching the complexities and, you know, all the angst and decision-making. And sometimes it was very divisive even. And one of those big points of contention was around resources. How do you share the resources, divide all of those up? And so during this transition phase, over the next, what, year and a half, if I've got my map right, what steps would you take to build productive negotiations with the other districts? And maybe even other surrounding districts? How would you work with other districts?
Do you know what? It's easy to talk. I will give you an example. Since I am working with Granite School District, I made an appointment with Ben Horsley, who is their superintendent. And I went into his office, and I asked him some questions. Ben, one of the number one problems that we are facing as educators in Alpine District is the growing language barrier. You have been dealing with this for years. In fact, 40% of their students are ESL students. So Ben and I had a good discussion, and he told me what they are doing in their district. We need to seek out best practices from other districts. Let's look at Kenyon's Jordan, and let's talk about what happened when that district split. Let's do things differently. I feel like we are in a good situation here. We all want to work towards three strong districts, and we are doing that. But we have to be able to talk. We have to be able to ask questions. We have to be willing to walk in and ask someone. Ben, tell me how you do this. What is it that you're doing? We have to seek out leaders in the other two districts that will be breaking off from ours. And we need to talk about this. We can be adults. We can work this out, and that is important. We need to be committed to that. We need to be open to new ideas. We need to seek out best practices, and then we need to act with kindness and decorum.
Thank you, Diane.
I think we all have the same goal of making sure that we have three strong districts. We hear this over and over in school board meetings and study sessions. I appreciate our current board having that be at the forefront of all their decisions, as they've had district staff come in and make recommendations for what happens for each of their individual programs. I've been impressed that they're worried about making sure we are thriving right now, but that that transition goes really well to these three districts. And I'm so grateful for that example, that we'll be able to partner with them when the new board is elected. I want you to know that I've been proactive in meeting candidates in the South and in the West, trying to connect now, so that when we're voted in, we already have established relationships. I'm following their campaigns. I'm on group calls, making sure that we can get started as soon as the election is over. I think that's important, that we work together. I think it'll be, it's actually really great that each of the three districts is going to have some different issues. For example, Orem, with a declining population, probably doesn't need as many buses or bus drivers. Where we are today, I sat in a meeting today at Viewpoint, and there was a lengthy discussion about how do we get more bus drivers so that kids aren't sitting at the school for an hour and a half? So how do we work with Orem to say, "Great." What kind of understanding can we come to where we ask for your bus drivers? Maybe we give them something that they need. So I think, and the West, growing so quickly, right? If we all have these different issues, I think there's ways we can work together to help solve these problems. And I'm grateful that I've established those relationships, so we can get going immediately.
Thank you, Megan. All right, when I looked at the questions, there were a number of questions about constituent concerns. And you're out on the campaign trail, you're hearing all of those concerns, whether it comes through email, face-to-face, social media. And so as you've heard these topics, whether it's something like AI or sensitive materials, or mental health, or, you know, political perspectives of teachers, whatever it is, how, as one member of the board, as you said, you know, I think you both indicated you're part of the group, as one member of the board, how would you go about expressing or dealing with some of these expressed concerns by constituents?
Yeah, I've had some surprising conversations on doorsteps that I've had to take a step back and go, "Okay, how do I feel about this? How do you feel about this?" I think as a board member, my number one priority is that we follow the policy and procedure that's already in place and the legislation that is in place. For some of these quote-unquote "hot" topics, there is already laws in place, and it is our job to follow those procedures. And as we do that, we can still create a safe, welcoming environment where all students feel respected. But we have House Bill 77, which I think is about where, where flags can fly. We have House Bill 11, which talks about transgender girls in sports. We have current policies in the district, Policy 6161, which talks about materials in our libraries. And I'm so grateful that we have these structures in place, that we are not, we're not making those decisions. It's our job to follow those, and then make sure our students within those parameters are getting their needs met. The library policy, I know about five years ago, that was kind of a hot topic during COVID. I was able to sit on a book review committee, and I was so happy there was a very clear procedure for who was going to be on the committee, what we had to do with the book that was in question. And I'll walk you through, the book can either be retained, it can be replaced, it can be restricted, or it can be removed. And it was really great to be a part of the process, not only from a parent perspective. A parent had a concern, they're a partnership in their kid's education, and then also watching the admin and the teachers make sure that we follow those procedures. So I think, the way I would end is just, I'm so glad that we already have some of those things in place, and it's our job to make sure that we're following those rules.
It has been delightful to be on people's doorsteps and to hear them express their concerns. And I am sure that there were many detailed questions about these concerns. I had a mother the other night who talked to me about how concerned she was that everything is online now, and she was not wanting her child to be exposed to the Chromebook and all of those things. And it's easy to say, "Well, wow, that's, you know, I don't agree with that," or "I do agree with that." But that's not the issue. The issue is that you need to listen to their perspective, and I learned some wonderful things. I talked to another man for over an hour about AI. man for over an hour about AI, and I learned some wonderful things from him, some ideas, some vision that he had about how AI could be used in the classroom. If we listen, if we truly listen to people's concerns, not only will they feel heard and validated, but we will learn some new things. There is not one person who has every answer to everything. And so as a board, it is our job to follow the policies that are in place. But we can listen. We can truly hear, and we can be open to new ideas. So for me, as a board member, that is my number one goal. What is your concern? Tell me why you feel that way. What are your ideas for solving this problem? This is our policy that is in place. These are the guidelines that we have to follow. But I appreciate hearing from you, and then I can report those things. And if we are open and work together, we can solve any problem.
Thank you, Diane. So we had a lot of questions around hot topics, and I think equal to that, there were a lot of questions around teachers and school leaders. So you're both teachers, which just warms my heart, but we have teachers running for office. It's just a dream to hear that. And we acknowledge that parents are their child's first teacher. But the main variable in the education of a student at school is the quality of a teacher, the effectiveness of the teacher. And we all know that leadership is second, akin to that. So what is the board's role in all of this? What is the board's role in recruitment and retention and preparation of effective teachers and leaders? And what strategies do you have in mind for retaining and supporting highly effective teachers in the classroom, in the school?
This is near and dear to my heart. I have partnered with thousands of parents over my career, and I have a small army of parents of past students who are helping in this campaign, some that I taught their student 15 years ago. But the thing about it is, they know that I care, they know that I will listen, and they know that I am open to their ideas and to supporting them. The thing about teachers is often they feel an island on their own, and we keep handing more flaming chainsaws to them and expecting them to juggle this. And then we want them to have the best possible outcomes in the classroom. All of these are good skills, all of these are good goals, all of these are wonderful things. But we must, we must make our teachers feel supported. Talking about something that is new, the master schedule, that I was talking to a teacher yesterday about that, and she said, I feel like people don't trust me. We need to make our teachers feel that we support them, that we hear them, that we believe in them, that we know they can do good things. We need to let them do what they were trained to do, do what they want to do. We have to quit giving them scripted curriculums. We need to let master teachers be master teachers. We need to not diminish the art and craft of teaching. Because if you look back on your favorite teacher, it is not someone who followed a script. It is someone who felt empowered in the classroom to teach how they felt was the best way, and we need to support them.
I agree with Diane. Teachers are a special breed. I know for my own four kids that are here in the district, they have made a huge impact on my family. Tori Basset, Howard Summers, some of these people have truly changed the life of my children. And I'm so grateful that they do something for them that I can't do for them. They've reached them in ways that will impact them forever. And I'm so grateful for the teachers in our district. I talked a little bit about this earlier, about teacher retention being a priority. So I'll touch on a few other points. I think it's important that we have coaches in our schools, coaches for our teachers. I was in a meeting this week, and they talked about how important that is, that the coach can come through, help teachers do a deep dive into data, help them collaborate. Are we funding those coaches? Are the schools funding it? Can the district fund it? I also think it's important, when you look at the size of our elementary schools, teacher retention is also tied to our administration. Some of our elementary schools are so big, but only have one principal, and they're larger than some of our middle schools that have multiple admin. So can we look at funding for those bigger elementary schools, a second administrator? Belmont is my home school. I have right behind Belmont Elementary, and they have two administrators with about 900 kids, and it makes such a difference to have one admin in the lunchroom during lunchtime, he's playing games, and then Ms. Roach is able to maybe handle, you know, parent things or other stuff that's happening in the school. So I think that's another thing we should look at is the size of school. How can we make sure our administrators are doing what they need to do? And the last thing I'll say is having a district liaison between schools, especially for specialties. I talked to a music teacher at Fox Hollow, and she said, I'm the only music teacher here. And so she's like, I would love to have a district liaison for other music teachers. How can we learn from each other, especially where, when you have in those music, art, PE? Thank you.
I know this is something that you both have dealt with as teachers, paid attention to, maybe with your own families. But we all are very aware of the issues of mental health for our young people, as well as our educators, I mean, the adults in our system as well, I think, deal with some mental health issues. So what concrete steps would you take to support the mental and emotional health of students and staff?
I think the first thing I would look at in our budget is can we fund a full-time counselor in our elementary schools? I was just at Traverse Elementary, and they used some of their Trust Land Fund's money to fund the other .5 to give them a full-time counselor. And they talked about the effects of that. Kids who are able to not only see someone when they're having an issue, but that counselor has time to go in and teach lessons, kindness, friendship into the classrooms. I was at Liberty Hills yesterday at an SEC meeting. Same thing came up. They don't have a full-time counselor, but they fund a social worker to come in. But I would love to see on a district level, if the money is there, getting a full-time counselor for our elementary school students. I love seeing Skyridge and Viewpoint have student advocates. That's also paid for by their Trust Lands money. Those student advocates work hand-in-hand with the counselors on attendance, another trusted adult for these kids, schoolwork, graduation rates, how important it is to have another set of eyes and hands to help these students. Skyridge and Belmont Elementary fund their wellness room through these funds, Trust Lands and TSSA money. The wellness room allows a student to step out, take a breather, regroup, and then come back to the classroom. Not only is that important for that student, but it allows the teacher to continue teaching their classroom full of students and not having to take the time with the one that might be needing a little extra care. So I've been grateful to see in the schools that'll be in our seat, that they're already doing some of these things and making sure that mental health is top of mind. And I think there's more we can do on a district level to support that.
For me, the root cause of all of this, the root solution to all of this, is setting up classrooms in optimum ways that teachers can have relationships with their students. The teachers themselves need to have good mental health. They need to be in a good space mentally for them to be able to have any type of relationship with other students. And so what we can do as a board is focus on setting up our classrooms in optimal ways. That means that we are not going to stack them deep and sell them cheap. We're going to work on reducing class sizes. Because if we just keep throwing more flaming chainsaws into the mix, our teachers are not available to give the relationship or to form that relationship with the students. So the very bottom line is, we need to set classrooms up in optimum ways. This will help the educator themselves. Many of the teachers are working eight, 10 hours a day, and they go home and they can't even put it down. They still have more to do. And so when we have students that have special needs that way, they are so overwhelmed themselves that it's difficult to meet the needs of the students. So it reminds me of the age-old question, are you going to put an ambulance at the bottom of the cliff, or are you going to put guardrails at the top? It's an old question, but it has relevance here. We need to have both, but we need to have guardrails at the top with relationships being the number one guardrail. We can have programs and policies of the wazoo, but the people who are really dealing with this are the teachers and the students. And we need to set them up in such a way that they can have the optimum class.
Thank you, Diane. We're going to jump down to programs, ladies. Just for your situation awareness, they did not have these questions ahead of time. I handed them to them when they walked in the door, but just so they have a visual in front of them. So there were so many great questions submitted, but we're running a bit short on time. So we'll jump to programs. Excuse me. And you've both addressed this a little bit. I love the saying that anything is possible, everything is not. And so as you think about your role as new board members and you're sorting through programs, and, you know, people love their favorite programs, so how will you make decisions around prioritizing funding and staffing for things like agenda talent, dual-language immersion, support for multilingual learners, additional supports for students with disabilities, CTE, you know, all the programs that fill our schools? So how will, what process would you use to go about prioritizing funding and support for programs?
I've had multiple people reach out to me about this, and everyone is concerned about the program that means something to them, and rightfully so. But for me, the number one thing we need to focus on is setting up classrooms in optimal ways, making class sizes be such that teachers can actually teach. That has got to be the focus of what we do in this new district. We have got to focus on the classroom. The classroom is where it's all at. If you want to make any lasting change, it can only come in a classroom. And so we need to set them up in such a way that the teachers can do what they were trained to do, and the students can feel seen and heard. I've had kindergarten classes with over 30 students in them. Let me tell you how difficult that is to meet all of those needs. So before we care about or we focus on all the different things, we need to focus on that. And if we get that right, the other things will fall into place. Now, something that is working in our favor is that when this district splits, all of the buildings and all of the teachers and all of the programs will remain as they are. We are not wiping the slate clean and starting over. So we have programs in place. We are going to have to look at programs and policies and what we offer, one step at a time. But we have to use our overall goal of making the classroom an optimal place to be, supporting those teachers so they can support the students, and then the other things will fall into place.
Thank you, Diane.
I want to broaden that again to say that I think students are probably need to be our number one priority. When we look at a student, there are teachers that impact them, staff that impact them, programs that impact them. And if we're looking at things through a student lens, I think it gives us a bigger picture of what's really happening. Before we make, or would have to make any decisions on programs, we have to look at the data. I agree. My daughter's in a DLI program. She does Friendship Belmont. Everyone's program feels important to them because it's their kid. And so we have to be able to look at the numbers. How many students are in programs? Are there, is it because they're in, I look at Special Ed, that's a program that we can't afford to cut, right? Those students need those extra hours, that extra attention. But let's look at the data, and let's see, go from there before we make any types of decisions. Our district has some amazing programs. I spent some time in Westlake at their farm day, and I had no idea about Future Farmers of America. And I met two kids. They gave me a tour of the farm. And one, I said to the one girl, I said, why, why are you doing this program? And she's like, you know, I have a really hard home life, and I joined this program, and I have friends. I now feel like I have a future. She's going to use the M-Tech program to look into diesel mechanics. And they're so excited because our district partners with them, and they're able to get it at a discounted rate. We have so many amazing programs in our district that I feel like, one, they will continue, and two, before we look at cutting them or expanding them, that we look at the people involved, the students, the staff, the budget, and make sure our decisions are data-driven.
Thank you. All right. I think we, looking at time, we want you to all be able to move. And here are other candidates who are going out into the comments. So we'll, I think we'll just jump forward and have you make a closing statement.
Great. Thank you. I want to say I'm so grateful for those that are here tonight. It is so cool to see students here. I'm sure you're getting extra credit somewhere for being here, but I love it.
So civic engagement.
Absolutely. I'm grateful for the PTA for putting this on. I know it was not easy to make sure we pulled this off. I want you to know that this is not just a campaign for me. It is a commitment. I'm a past teacher. I'm a parent volunteer, and I've been an advocate for public schools for a long time. I know the challenges and the opportunities that are going to come with this new district because I'm in the schools weekly. I'm running for Aspen Peak School Board because I think that every student deserves a safe, welcoming, high-quality education. And I think my service and my time in the schools and on the campaign trail show that I'm willing to put the work in to make that happen. If elected, I will put that same energy, expertise, and collaboration and bring that to the board. I want to make sure that our students feel loved and supported and safe. I want to make sure our teachers know that we have a culture that respects them as educators and experts in their field. And I want parents to know that I view them as partners in their children's education. I hope that I'll earn your vote by November 4th.
Over my career, I have partnered with literally thousands of parents. And as I have been out campaigning, I have heard people say the misconception that parents don't care anymore. But from a lifetime of experience, I can tell you that is simply not true. Parents care, and they care deeply. As a teacher, it was my honor to involve parents in my classroom in ways that worked for them, and the results were exponential. It is imperative that we have a teacher's insight on the board. From decades of experience, I know how decisions made at the top levels ripple out to real students, real teachers, and real classrooms. My name is Diane Knight, and I invite you to join with me as together we transform this Aspen Peak School District into something extraordinary.
It's time for clapping.